Ladies and gentlemen, this next group of lovely human beings are joining us on this program because they do something similar to what I do. They like to go up to their politicians and call them out for their terrible job of running their cities. Now, you guys know me, I'm the pimp on a blimp. I went viral for going and speaking at the Dallas City Hall, at the Dallas City Council meetings. And now these lovely people speak at the Chicago City Hall meetings. And the mayor in Chicago does not like this next group, the one, the only Chicago Red. How are y'all doing today?
Good. Thank you for having us.
Pretty good.
Now, uh, I'm sure all y'all are pretty happy that Trump won. Uh, what is the city of Chicago feel about Trump being the 47th president?
Ice, ice, baby. Boom, 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 ba, ba, boom, boom. Ice is coming, okay? Not only is ice coming, but we're gonna get some accountability through the upcoming Attorney General, because we want audits in the city of Chicago to figure out how and where they pulled all this money for the illegals from while Americans are suffering.
And P Ray, the work you guys are doing is so important because, listen, I do believe that we have marginalized societies. I feel like, uh, you know, the African-American community has been marginalized for sure, not just by conservatives, but by the liberals, I think even more so. But when you talk about social services and the fact that an illegal immigrant is gonna have easier access to social services than a black or, uh, uh, an American person that's born here in America. You guys spoke out about that. I've seen Dennis speak out about that. So Dennis, how is the illegal immigration affecting people in Chicago that can't afford their bills, but they see these illegal immigrants get free hotel rooms and, and free plane tickets all across the country?
Well, because of the failure of the, uh, not only the mayor, but as the president himself, he brought that flood of turmoil, not into the country, but in the city of Chicago. So when Brandon Johnson campaigned that his, the first priority is the migrant, he follow up through that campaign speech and he took it to heart. So, you know, P Ray and Ms. Jackson and I, we had enough of it because they doing a crime. They get away with a lot of things. They buying food, selling food out in the middle of the street. And they just like, they living like Hollywood stars as we live in like poor people during the dark age of England. So we had enough of, we just said enough and enough. And that was my first time in City Hall. I'd never been in City Hall before in my life. And that was my first time. And I whispered to Ms. Jackson when it was time for me to speak. I was nervous and she says, no, just speak what you have to speak. And then next thing, it will game on.
So Ms. Jackson, you, you, you must have spoken at a few of these meetings. Now, I've spoken at a lot of city council meetings. Dennis, it is nerve wracking, even if you are passionate about what you believe in and you're well spoken. You have a pre-written speech. It doesn't matter. When you go up there and you have those negative, low vibrational energy demons looking at you, you know, it does, it does make you feel some sort of way, right? Ms. Jackson, tell, tell the people what it's like, uh, to go speak at one of these meetings.
Well, on one hand, it's very liberating because it's the only way that your voice can get heard. Now, um, what I want to clear is that it's not just the social services. That's part of it. But then you have people like myself that come down there or like Zoe Lee that came down there because we're property owners. And as black property owners, our rights are being completely violated. While they're doing things like what brought me down there was the issue of the, uh, corruptness of the probate division. Uh, because my mother's estate is in probate. And the thing that irritates me and gets me coming down there all the time and upsets me is because like what we're talking about in City Hall, you see the city council and the mayor go all out to try to make sure that these illegal immigrants have somewhere to stay. While at the same time, right before my very eyes, I'm seeing the same city do all type of things to push black property owners out of our property. It's not just the social services because a lot of us don't depend on social services. We're working class people. We're homeowners. And to see our rights being violated for illegal immigrants, for our property taxes to be out of control, for illegal immigrants, that's a major slap in the face and it infuriates me.
You are right. It's not just the social services, but you see these people, they're, they're taking their debit cards and they're buying these foods or they're cooking food on the street and they don't have to do any sanitation rules. If you and I had a restaurant, they would shut us down in two seconds. Yet they let these illegal immigration, illegal immigrants get away with anything. So Ms. Jackson, other than the probate with your mother knowing how terrible that is, you know, how they're screwing you over. How else has Chicago been affected by the illegal immigration? What would you say is the worst thing that's happened to the city because of this? You see Lakin Riley in Georgia was brutally murdered by a guy, Trin De Aruga, a Venezuelan gang member. So what do you think the biggest plague is? Is the Venezuelan gangs? Is it, uh, you know?
It's the issue of public safety. Yeah. It's the issue of public safety, period. You know, the fact that you have all these undocumented people roaming our streets. We have no idea who they are, where they're from, when they commit crimes. We have no idea who they are. Um, like in a lot of these cases, by the time that you find these people, they're using the third, fourth, fifth name. They got the fifth, sixth, seventh social security number. You know, it's completely unfair to the citizens because if an American citizen breaks the law, you have our fingerprints, school records, dental records, all type of ways, immunization records, all type of ways to find us. But yet these people can come across this, uh, border. We have no idea who they are and they're allowed to just run rampant. If nothing else, I think the whole city can agree on, it's a matter of public safety.
Can I keep back on?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're also dealing with, uh, diseases in the Chicago public schools. I am a Chicago public school graduate. My parents are Chicago public school graduates. I have a child in the Chicago public schools. I love CPS. The city of Chicago was the epicenter of the measles outbreak earlier this year in the spring because they put the unvaccinated children of the illegals in the Chicago public schools. And then they brought diseases. So we had measles, we had TB and we had meningitis. Meningitis is worse because the children cannot get vaccinated for mening, for meningitis until the sixth grade, which means all the children, fifth grade and under were totally exposed. I have friends who had to quarantine their children because they had measles outbreaks in their schools and nobody chose to do anything about it. Um, I mean, they literally left our babies exposed to all of the elements in the world, to virtue signal to the world. And that's not fair.
And it doesn't make sense, you know, during the pandemic, you had to have a vaccine to come into this country unless you're an illegal immigrant. So they don't even have to follow the rules that everybody else has to follow when it comes to medications, immunizations. I mean, all kinds of stuff. They don't have to abide by the rules that we do, which makes us have a two-tiered justice system. And that's ridiculous. So now I want to talk about speaking at city councils, you know, if you guys aren't too familiar with me, but I started, and I started speaking at city council meetings very earnestly, honestly, just complaining. They wouldn't pay attention to me, you know, I would get a little attention, but once I started acting crazy, I started singing songs. I started just, you know, making a circus out of it. And, and you would think that that would be dumb, but what people don't realize is these politicians, their feelings, their egos are so big that if you just lampoon them a little bit, you say a little hard truths to them, it affects them. So how have you guys, before we play this video, how much have you affected, uh, Mayor Johnson? And did you guys speak during Lori Lightfoot's tenure? And didn't she make it hard to speak at city council meetings from, uh, what I remember?
Lori Lightfoot made it very impossible because she was like the queen of England. And defining her is like a death sentence to the citizen of Chicago. Because Lori Lightfoot, when she was mayor at the time during the pandemic, she was not focusing on the citizen of Chicago, neither she wasn't focusing on the south and west side of Chicago, Ralph Hand. Only thing she focusing on was the LGBTQ community. And that's the only thing that got Lori Lightfoot out of office. And furthermore, she compared, voted her out, well, I didn't vote her out, just like I didn't vote Brandon Johnson in. But at the same time, Lori Lightfoot always blamed racism, the same way that Brandon Johnson is blaming racism. Because when Lori Lightfoot, the first thing she could, when she got voted out during the primary, she said, the reason why I lost the election because they're racist people who want me out of office. But it was not the racist people that vote her out of office. It was the, the policy that she never did have to protect us people in Chicago during the pandemic and during the, uh, ride of 2020.
And people noticed that. But Ms. Jackson, did you ever see that Lori Lightfoot, uh, put that bad review on Yelp for that limousine, uh, service? You know what I'm talking about? Did you guys ever see that?
No, I didn't because, um, I lived in California for a very long time. I was born and raised in Chicago. After college graduation, I went to California. When this became an issue with my mother's estate, that's what me bought, brought me back to, uh, California. So I wasn't, I mean, to Chicago. So I wasn't going to City Hall under Lori Lightfoot. So maybe P Ray can speak more to that than I can.
Well, it was just, it was just a viral thing. P Ray, did you ever see that where she got caught? She left a really mean review on this Yelp, a Yelp review for a limousine service. And the limousine service responded and said that she lied. She said that the guy took her away, that she didn't want to go. My point with all that is that Lori Lightfoot's the type of person to go leave a negative review on Yelp, uh, on, you know, on a small business. Like she does not care. She only cares about herself. And if you read the review, it's written like a crazy person. So it shows you that she is crazy. So Lori Lightfoot's nuts. Is Brandon Johnson any better or is he, is he the same thing?
He's actually substantially worse. Uh, but he answered your first question. If our actions have had any effect, we just saved the city of Chicago $300 million. I told them they should throw us a ticker tape parade, okay? I think this is amazing. This is the first time in the history of Chicago that the entire city council voted against the mayor. And that's because of his behavior. He's very arrogant, uh, but it's rooted deeply in, I believe insecurity. I always tell the people in our organization, I feel sorry for him. Uh, they'll tell you, P Ray's always like, I feel sorry for Brandon. And it's because you can see from his body language, he's very anxious. He's digging with his hands. Uh, when Ms. Jessica and I went to city council one time, they put us in the top, uh, in the back, like on the third floor. And when he looked up and saw us in the glass, he literally ran off the mic, literally in the middle of someone's comments. And we were like, whoa, you know, we don't bite, you know, why are you running from us like this? But he's ashamed because now our Chicago issue has become a national issue. We're encouraging everybody around America to say, whoa, wait a minute, you don't have to take this. And now they are the fools of the internet. And I think that shame is another reason why they're starting to move more right. But we have definitely had a major impact. And again, $300 million, we just saved for everybody. So it's not just about, you know, uh, Ms. Jessica's probate or my issue with the property taxes and the lack of school buses or Dennis's issue with safety, everybody would have had to pay. So somebody has to fight, why not us?
No, and it's great, the work that you're doing. People that are watching this at home, guys, you can go and speak. Ms. Jackson, you know, she probably didn't realize that she's gonna be an activist like this. Uh, P Ray, I'm sure you probably didn't realize you guys would be going super viral. Dennis, you probably didn't expect you speaking there would create a, a movement, but it does, it does work. When you go up there and you call them out. So, uh, when it comes to speaking at the meeting too, you know why Brandon Johnson doesn't like it? Cause he sees there's a media there too. So you guys are clowning them there in front of the media. So how has the media treated you? A lot of the left-wing media that would call you a black white supremacist for being a Trump supporter or conservative, how have they treated you all in the press?
Well, one of the first things that we started noticing, um, when I first started speaking at City Hall, the media would be there for committee meetings as well, not just City Hall meetings. Um, but then they start taking away the, uh, media for the committee meetings. Then they start doing things like making us stay outside. And then they would start canceling the meetings at the last minute. They would do things like, uh, not let us speak by, uh, switching up the sign up sheets. They did all type of things. And the fact that we continue to come, they couldn't, you know, they couldn't stop. So now what Brandon Johnson has done with the media is kind of like what P Ray alluded to a few minutes ago. He'll do things like bust in his, uh, what organizations and supporters, yeah. And he'll have them downstairs to crowd out City Hall. And then he'll have them sign up to speak, which would lessen our chances of getting to the mic. And that way the media will pick up what he has scripted people there to say. And it'll give the false illusion like he has the city at large supporting him. But the way that we've been able to fight that is because we are there at all meetings. You have people there with their phones. They pick it up on their phones and then they put it on their Instagram or Facebook and it ends up getting on YouTube and everything anyway. The last time that they allow the media to be in there at a committee meeting or, uh, without pushback is when you see that, uh, video when I say we coming for those seats. And see, and that goes back to what P Ray said too. That's been the biggest impact. And that's part of the reason why they voted the way that they did with that 50 to zero vote too. Because we've made it clear to City Hall that if they keep ignoring us, keep voting for this immigration, keep messing up that money, we coming for those seats. And we made it clear that we're coming to replace them with Republicans. We don't want no more of this, this, uh, full Democratic machine in City Hall that leaves us with absolutely nowhere to go, no recourse, no other perspective. They got us trapped in a Democratic Cook County maze. So we've made it clear that according to the way that they vote, we coming for those seats.
Okay, let's hear this speech. Jimmy, I don't know if he shared it.
We got people, what, officers who families don't even want you to come to the funeral. You just like a schoolyard bully. That at some point, and you might not know nothing about it because you grew up in Elgin. But those of us who grew up on the south side and west side of Chicago, we all know at some point that bully gets cornered in the alley and everybody come at him and he ain't gonna have nobody to help him. That's you. That's you. Keep thinking you ain't gonna, you ain't gonna abide by what the president of the United States said. Everybody know better than that. I see you Anna Valencia in your red. You know what it is? This is the second time you showed up in city council in red. You know what it is? Yeah. Yeah.
Look at that. Ms. Jackson.
So you and the rest of them that know what time it is, y'all come on. You leave that loser where he is. He's a loser. He's a loser. No, me and Zoe, we ain't doing nothing for nobody except for ourselves. We got you, loser.
Now, now, yeah, pause that. For the people playing at home, and, and I want to watch Dennis real quick. It is nerve wracking, but tell them how good of a high you feel after doing that. I know you, when you left there, you were probably zooming. You probably felt like, you know, you could, you know, uh, uh, fly. You're probably feel so good after something like that.
Dennis?
Oh, I thought you was, he was talking about.
I was talking to Ms. Jackson. No, I was talking to Ms. Jackson.
No, I love it because I know Mayor Johnson has intentionally not resolved the case of my mother's probate. I know that he has intentionally been retaliating against me. And see, the thing that I like, you know, unlike P Ray, I'm not looking for no political office. So I can move how I want to move, you know? So when I say things like that, he knows that I mean it. I catch him at every meeting he's in. I catch him at the PCB meets. I catch him if I hear about him in a meeting in another part of downtown, in another, uh, uh, meeting with, uh, public officials. Like I told you from day one, I'm gonna be everywhere you are. And I guess he thought I was playing, but I'm everywhere he is. And I move just like how you saw me move. Oh, I love it. Cause he needs to see that people in Chicago are sick of him. And even though it started off as an issue in the black community, because of his negligence, incompetence and retaliation spirit, it has came, had to ripple an effect all over the city. So because of that, it's not just the black citizens that get behind me or get behind us. It's all of the citizens of Chicago, which end up being all the people of America. So we love it because it's a win for us. And as long as he ignoring me, it keeps the eyes on him.
That is all fact.
Because Ms. Jessica said this, I want to say that Brandon lives in my neighborhood. So we pull up at his house. Okay, we go to Brandon's house with our Trump flags and our bull horns, um, you know? So everybody got their own thing, you know, but yeah, we, we catch him everywhere. When I said we, I know where he lives. Um, when we get there, the Chicago Police Department is there waiting on us because they know that we were coming to stand in front of his house. So this is not just a, a, um, a movement where we're on the mic. We meet him, like she said, everywhere he goes. The grocery store, the gas station, our children attend the same school. I will meet him in the hallway. Uh, this is not a game. You can't bully Chicago people. We, we're, I mean, I hate to say it, but we are a city of bullies and bully slayers. And we are the team of bully slayers. And we're not gonna stop until they treat us fairly.
Well, speaking of bully slayer, oh yeah, go ahead Dennis, cause then I want to play your clip. Yes, sir.
Uh, the not, another thing is that crime has risen up more in the city of Chicago since ShotSpotter has been deactivated, Ralph Hand. And Brandon Johnson had kept that promises. So now more, it was a 29-year-old lady that got shot, left for dead for about two or three days under the ShotSpotter, uh, post. So his response was, his, his, uh, argument was it was a walkie-talkie take on a tree or a pole. And so now ShotSpotter is not a crime prevention, it don't prevent a crime, but it will expedite the police and, uh, ambulance there much quicker than people dial 911. So now what Brandon Johnson is forcing us to do, now we gonna have to arm ourselves against these criminals, arm ourselves against these, uh, Venezuelan gang members, arm ourselves against anybody who trying to harm us. And see if Brandon Johnson don't see it. So what Brandon Johnson gonna plan on doing? If he see us in a two-way community start shooting back at these criminals and stuff, he gonna sit around here and trying to see if he could ban the guns, which he can't because the Supreme Court had said that we have the right to bear arms. So Brandon Johnson is like a political pimp for criminals because he ain't doing nothing. And now he threatened to, uh, cut the police budget. But now he went from a $300 million property tax increase. So we say, okay, let's soften it up to $150 million property tax increase. So now Ms. Jackson, P Ray and myself, we gonna go there again to the City Hall meeting. And we, and next time, we really going send a severe warning to them to not vote for this $150,000, $100, I'm sorry, $150 million property tax increase. If you want to, uh, balance the budget, get rid, uh, lift the sanctuary laws in the city of Chicago, let ICE do their job. And then you'll have the budget. But along that, he playing the race card game, talking about, well, I'm a descendant of slave. Then who's the whipping boy? It gotta be JB Prister. Who's the master? Joe Biden. Where's the plantation? 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. So we already vote the mistress out. That's Kamala Harris. We gonna bring Trump in and if he block ICE, guess what? I'd be happy to go on the street and help ICE get these, uh, immigrants out of the city of Chicago. Because guess what? He, I don't work for the city of Chicago. I'm a taxpayer. So as long as I exercise my second amendment right, I guess I can help ICE do their job.
Yes, you could. Now let's play this clip. Uh, Jimmy, pull up Dennis speaking at, uh, City Hall.
Good afternoon.
I want to know, how does it feel that Trump is in office right now? You see the, you see the, uh, Mayor Brandon Johnson, you underestimate us. You underestimate the black people and you underestimate Chicago Red. We're the thorn in your side. And we're gonna be the thorn on everybody else in this council member's side too. If you don't stop what you're doing, we gonna take matters in our own hand and we gonna stop it. You know that Trump had pulled 45% of the voter in the state of Illinois, 37 in the city of Chicago? That's the statistic. That means Illinois is turning purple. We gonna turn red. Y'all can bird dog me all y'all want, but if y'all is.
Well, and Dennis, that's so great. Now, I only got you guys for a couple more minutes. Now, I said this before the interview, my favorite thing is when somebody comes up to me and I like when people say, hey, you know, I watch your content and put me in a better mood. But I really like it when somebody comes up to me and says, Alex, I saw you speak at a city council meeting and that inspired me to go speak at a city council meeting. And that makes me feel so good because it, it is something important that we go exercise our first amendment right, a freedom of speech to go there and participate in these meetings. So how, how have you guys changed the amount of people speaking? Are there a lot more people speaking at the meetings? Cause now the Dallas meetings, they're so packed. They used to let all the speakers speak at the beginning. Mayor Johnson does not like me. So they made a rule where they let the first five speakers speak, which he picks the first five. And then you have to wait to the very end of the meeting, which can sometimes be two hours, three hours, four hours, five hours, six hours, depending on the docket. It can go, it can be a very long time. So you have to sit there and wait at the meeting hours to speak when you, when the proper procedure was to speak at the beginning. And a lot of that's because I started going viral in Dallas. So more, uh, people got inspired to go speak there. So how have you guys inspired people to show up at City Hall and speak at these city council meetings?
Um, well, well, we definitely have seen, uh, at, at some points, we've seen more people show up. But I think that it's less about the amount of people as much as it's about the consistency. You know, there are about four of us, four or five of us that are always there, you know? Um, and then when you put in the other people that come as they are able to, because some people are still working and things like that.
It's hard to go to a city council meeting for five hours. You got a job. Yeah, it's not easy. It's not an easy thing.
I will tell you this, Brandon Johnson in City Hall couldn't take all four of us and P Ray and Dennis and let's say Carter and Tyrone and all the, and Doris, all the people that we know that will come and melt that mic every time they come. Every time P Ray comes, she melts that mic. You know, every time, now this was Dennis' first time coming, but I already know when he come back, he gonna melt that mic, you know? So it's just that we're there all the time and like how Dennis said in his clip, and we are that thorn in the side. They know when they see me, they see P Ray, whether she there or not. They know they see Dennis, whether he's there or not. They see Zoe, whether she's there or not. Because they know that we are together in terms of what our goal is for the city, in terms of what our goals are for the community. And they know that we are in contact with one another. We support one another. We show up for one another, whether we're in City Hall or not. We just come down there, let's say four or five of us, like P Ray saying, we just hold the line. But already know when P Ray come and my name get pulled, cool. If it doesn't already know, she gonna blast them. Already know.
I didn't touch you up. They do a lottery there though. So they gotta pull your name.
I mean, just for city council meetings. See, just for city council meetings.
Committee meetings you can't speak at, but, but the city.
Yeah, they first time, first third. Yeah.
Did they rig, did they rig the poll? Do they rig that? So only certain people speak or do you think they're honest about that? Yeah, of course.
No, that's what we talked about letting people in. Yeah.
They're trying to stuff the box. That's all. I was gonna say to Ms. Jessica's point, he'll bring in his people. So there, let's say it's five of us. He'll bring in 15 of his people. Now there are 20 people in the box. So more of his people get pulled than us.
Yeah, that's how, that's how he, uh, stacks it in his favor. Well, guys, you guys have to keep doing this and I'm not a role model. I don't, I don't really want to give advice, but this is my advice to y'all. Don't stop. And y'all should get even more crazy. I'm just saying y'all like, you know, I mean, be respectful, you know, don't break the law, obviously. But y'all should call him out. Don't pull any punches because Ms. Jackson, your video is so awesome calling him a loser. And Dennis, you were just bringing facts saying that how it's gonna turn red and purple. Like everybody has a different, uh, style when you go up there. But I guess my point is, don't be scared, don't hesitate, don't pull any punches and bring the pain. And I know you guys always do that, you too, P Ray. So, so thank you guys for doing this. And I want to keep in contact with y'all. And I'd like to come up to Chicago and speak at a meeting with y'all here in the near future if I could, uh, cause I'd like to link up. And I really want to help your organization and we need more people signed up there so he can't stack it in his favor. So before. So before we go, P Ray, Dennis, Ms. Jackson, can y'all each go around and say how people can find you and support you, P Ray?
Sure. I'm actually, all my info is there in the title line. But you can follow or support the organization at ChicagoRed.org. That is the lifeblood. Everything that we're doing, we're doing this with a bullhorn and courage. That's it. We are not, when we met, the RNC did not drop golden blooms in our pockets. Okay? We are doing this literally with what God has given us. So please go to ChicagoRed.org and support us. You can also follow me on X at ChicagoRedP or hashtag ChicagoRed. We are serious about saving our city. This is not a game for us people. I live in the building that my grandparents bought in 1972. I'm standing on a half, more than half of a decade of property tax receipts. And I'm gonna continue to pay my property taxes to keep the land that my people still on their feet to buy for me. That's what this is about. Just don't, don't, please always remember that this is life or death for us. This is not about entertainment. This is not about going viral. This is not about monetary things. This is about us saving the city that we love deeply from the core of our beings. We love it here. Even the tap water is delicious, y'all. We love Chicago and we're not gonna let these progressive weirdos take it from us.
Well, but P Ray, don't hate on it. When it goes viral and they see it, that makes it, that, that, that messes with Brandon Johnson. I'm just saying that Brandon Johnson hates when y'all go viral. Don't underestimate that. He hates that. Trust me.
That we're doing this for clout. So that's, so that Ms. Jessica briefly.
They're gonna say that. Yeah, but you're not doing it for clout. You don't get paid to go do this thing. Anybody that's saying that shit, the hater, guys, they're not making any money. And even if you do get some small donations, this isn't a very lucrative business, guys. They could be out of job working and making money, not spending all damn day at a, at a city council meeting. So it's not about the money. It's not about the clout. But I would argue that going viral, it makes Brandon Johnson sicker than anything in the world. Okay, Ms. Jackson, where can they find?
He, he, he always suffered from panic attacks.
He's gonna need his Xanax prescription. He's gonna, he's got his Xanax dealer. He better be calling him. Y'all gonna give him.
You, you know some, after us three show up, it's like a nightmare that he won't be able to get out. So, you know, after, after the end of this City Hall meeting, he, he probably gonna hate the color red every time he go to a stop sign. He might blow right through it. And so, so my thing is this here, if that, we might go, he might go from a panic attack to a heart attack later on after this, Ralph Hand. If so, well, you don't blame, don't blame the red. Just blame yourself.
Well, now it's Ms. Jackson's fault calling him a loser. That is right. That raised his blood pressure. So Ms. Jackson, how can, how can people find you and support you?
Um, they could just hit me up about my email at Jessica, J E S S I C A Renee, R E N E E Jackson, J C K S O N six two at gmail dot com. I don't really do social media, you know, people being there with their phones or whatever.
Use you. Wow, you're not even on social media. And they're gonna say you're doing it for clout. You get, I'm not even on social media. You're lying, Brandon Johnson, accusing me of being that clout hungry. That's ridiculous.
I'm on Facebook and stuff. But the main takeaway that I want people to get from this is number one, for black people, watch your property. Pay attention to these processes with your property, you know? And my hope, if there's any clout chasing that I'm doing, is that Trump sees my videos and me talking about the corruption of the courts. And I want him to come in to Cook County and deal with these courts, these civil courts. Because he knows all about the corruption of courts based on what he has experienced. So as him being the president, my hope is that come on Trump, come on into as we call Crook County and deal with these courts because the Democratic Party got a stronghold on the citizens of this city. And we need relief. And right now, our relief will come from the federal government.
And I will make sure, you know, I'm friends with Laura Trump. Donald Trump knows who I am. I'm sure you've seen your footage already, but we'll get you, I'll get these clips to his communications director as soon as we're done. And I'm sure he's already seen it, to be honest, but I will definitely send this all to the, the Trump campaign, no problem. And I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not kidding. I'm gonna come up to Chicago and they probably won't pull my name in the city hall, but I'll go speak at a committee meeting and I'll wear Brandon Johnson out. I mean, I will wear him out like an old pair of tennis shoes. I mean. Oh, I'm an expert.
Yeah, we want our president to come too. So if he is watching this, Mr. President, please come to the city of Chicago, put your name in the box and address the city council.
I don't think he had to put his name in the box. I think they'd let him address the council. I know, I know. He should. Rules are rules. Rules are rules. They probably let, they probably let the president speak, but, but everybody needs to go do this. And, and you guys, even though you guys are a special group, you don't have to be a special person to speak at this. And people don't realize this. Anybody can go speak, guys. So, so please, I hope that you get encouraged to go out there and speak against the tyranny that's happening in your city. So everybody, guys, go support Chicago Red. Thank you so much, P Ray, Ms. Jackson, Dennis. And I'm gonna be in contact with you guys and I'll let you know once I hear back if Trump watches any of this and sees your clips. But I'll do anything I can to help you guys in, in consistency key, like Ms. Jackson said, don't stop. I mean, I know you guys gotta take days off. You got work and jobs and kids, but just stay consistent. If you go there more, more often than not, something good will happen. And you guys will do more things where you save the city $300 million. You'll save the city more money. And it'll just be beneficial for the citizens that aren't able to go speak at the meeting. So, so keep it up, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And all right, and guys, we're gonna post this probably on Tuesday. We might clip it down a little. I don't know. But, but I will send, I will send your video right now to Trump's communications director. I'll do that right now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, God bless. Thank you. Thank you.
And come, please come to Chicago. We got some great pizza.
I am. I'm not kidding. I'm, I'm not kidding. I've spoken in New York. I've spoken in Los Angeles. I'm saying I've spoken at all cities, but I've not done Chicago because they made it so hard. I was actually in Chicago and tried to do it one time, but they did that lottery system and I didn't get my name pulled. And then I went and drove to Lori Lightfoot's house and there's a bunch of cops out in front of it. That was the height of the pandemic. Yeah, Beatles. I mean, I just, there were, there was like six cops outside of her house. But listen, I, I love the city of Chicago. My mom used to live there. So I just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very important city that, that shouldn't be in a bad state with illegal immigration and what's happening. So thank you, guys. Keep it up and we'll stay in contact and bug my producer too. If y'all need anything from me, hit up me and I'll follow you guys all on Twitter. Anything I can do to help, don't, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Talk to you guys soon. Keep it up. Don't stop.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you guys too. All right.
God bless America. See.
God bless America. See ya.